Okay, Proposal 5B. This brings our, whoa. How'd I get to the bottom? I can't see the totals. Okay, so.
Can't see the bottom.
Yeah.
We don't think you can scroll down.
No, let's see if I can do this.
You want me to go out of the presentation?
Let us tell you what it is? Oh, you know, I can see it on this one.
You can do it there.
Yeah. Okay, twenty-five eighty.
Data there.
All right, so Dearborn High would have all of Bryan again and would have the Smith students who are currently there and the Stout students who are currently there. Again, they'd be losing the Eunice population in Proposal 5B. Woodworth, now we split it into bigger chunks, if you will. Henry Ford and Miller would be at Etzel Ford and William Ford and Miller would be at Fortson. Smith, same population that's currently there would continue to go to Etzel Ford. Stout, again, no change there. And for, and then that brings the Etzel Ford number and that one in this proposal would be like twenty-one sixty, is that the number you have or twenty-one?
Yeah, twenty-one sixty.
Twenty-one sixty. Fortson has, you know, as I said, Woodworth, the William Ford and Miller students. It would have all of Eunice and it would have the current Stout students that are there. And that one brings Fortson down under twenty-six hundred, was it twenty-five eighty?
Twenty-five eighty.
Yep, twenty-five eighty for that. It's okay, we got them.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're good, thank you. Twenty-five eighty for Fortson. Again, your biggest change here would be the Woodworth population being split as now currently, most of them do go to Fortson. They definitely have a small percentage that goes to Etzel Ford. Another slight change would be Eunice. Instead of having them split into two schools, you have Eunice all with one school. The numbers are much more balanced within all three high schools, much more favorable with regards to student populations. Now, the drawbacks here is, the main drawback is busing. Busing increases tremendously at Etzel Ford. It's reduced by one at Dearborn High, but it goes up by ten at Etzel Ford for a total of thirty-three school buses within, you know, by the four-year transition. Construction, Dearborn High, again, Etzel Ford and Berry Center.
So, the construction for Etzel Ford to accommodate 5B, the twenty-one sixty students, would that be sufficient with the four classrooms we have planned or we'd have to go bigger than that?
For Etzel Ford?
Yeah.
I would think we'd have to go bigger than that, but I'll leave it to Tom.
The plan they would have is the eight classroom rooms at Etzel Ford.
Okay. Um, oh. I just want to make sure I understand the William, the Miller split. Is that north and south of Michigan Avenue?
You'd have both sides of Michigan Avenue and you're splitting them by elementary feeder. So, the Henry Ford students and then the Miller students that are there. So, Schlaf, I think, is it Schlaf?
I was gonna say, yeah, what's the cutoff?
Ruby, Ruby's the cutoff, south of Ruby.
South of Ruby.
South of Ruby, so, yeah, that's, Ruby is in between, for those of you that don't know, is in between Ford Road and Michigan Avenue.
Right. Okay.
And then West of Shaker.
Then the other, go, all right.
Yeah.
Trustee Barry.
Tom, I'm sure we saw the number before, but adding the eight classrooms to Etzel Ford, remind me the cost?
Three point four million.
Three point four million. Thank you.
That's something we can pay for out of the operating budget.
Correct, we would use probably enhancement and the building and site fund to pay for that.
Okay, thank you.
Principal Caspell makes that in a week, so that's not a problem.
I'm sorry?
He's willing to donate, is that what you're trying to say?
He's willing to, yeah. He's getting into philanthropy a lot more these days, so.
Two kids in college. You're gonna have six Sunday so remember that.
Thanks, Abe.
Yeah, and he's gonna have more than what you have to word him of.
I'm sorry, just to clear, that was four classrooms?
Eight.
Eight classrooms?
Eight at Etzel Ford.
That's with 5B.
Yeah, that's with 5B.
And the cost on that again?
Three point four million.
How many buses did you say that would add? You said one from Dearborn High, was that adding seven to Dear, to Etzel?
Ten to Etzel.
Ten.
Over four years, because you're transporting all those Woodworth students to Etzel Ford, four-hundred-and-eighty students.
And we're saying a bus is about fifty-four thousand dollars a year to operate?
Correct.
And that's with three students per seat, I'm assuming?
Yes.
Another wrinkle in the conversation.
Absolutely.
Ouch. What was the net increase, Abe, on that one?
The net increase in buses?
Yes.
At Etzel.
At Etzel.
At Etzel, ten. At Etzel.
But one less at Dearborn.
Correct.
Yeah. So, from a district standpoint, nine new buses, four-hundred-and-fifty thousand, plus we need to buy buses.
And drivers, which I saw the article today.
And again, that's one of the cons, you know, one of the negatives there. One of the positives is your numbers are a lot more balanced than Proposal 5B as opposed to 5A. 5A and 5B were both taken from Proposal 2 and, again, from the community forums and so on. So, we, you know, manipulated Proposal 2 a little bit and you took some of the information that we received from some of our community members and so on and came up with Proposals 5A and 5B.
So, when the principals weighed in on Proposal 5, which ones, do you want to share which ones you weighed in on more heavily, 5A or 5B?
Well, I.
I will.
I'm pretty sure I know what he'll.
Well, I, you know, 5B obviously is, you know, a couple hundred less, so that would make more sense.
5A for Etzel.
Okay. Mark doesn't care either way, it doesn't change.
Same, same.
So, to go back, so, yeah, we reduce two-hundred kids every hour and I'm still ten classrooms short.
Right.
So, Hussein, we don't have space in the three high schools for the kids that we have, so I just want to make sure that everyone's aware, we're gonna get four, hopefully get four new.
We're gonna need the additions, no matter.
Four new classrooms, sure, but I'm still six classrooms short, which is around two-hundred students. So, the Eunice kids going back to Fortson, I think, make sense, they're in the community. Heam is welcoming back with open arms, not that we're glad to lose them, but those two-hundred students represent for us probably the breathing room that breathing room.
That, by the way, is my neighborhood.
Yeah.
And, and my kids actually went to a couple different middle schools and then, but they, we had school choice, so they went to Etzel to stay with their friends. But Dearborn High has been our neighborhood school for well over thirty-plus years.
You know, there's no busing at Fortson, so those students that they're proposing to bus, we would actually be doing them a big favor because we sometimes have to find.
Some of the parents have gotten kind of used to their kids being able to get onto the bus, but that.
No, I'm talking about the Woodworth.
Oh, the Woodworth students, yeah.
I'm talking about the Woodworth, the ones by Michigan Avenue in Greenfield. I mean, I hear stories all the time about these kids having to walk to Fortson and for me, that's, it's a walk.
It's quite a, it's.
It's quite a walk, especially in this kind of weather. That's an interesting point.
Yeah. We don't, you know.
Close and cons.
So, when we look at Proposal, again, Proposal 2, 5A and 5B all on one slide, then you can see where your differences are. Again, we're adding a lot more buses than Proposal 5B, but we're reducing the population at Fortson to twenty-five eighty, which is, gives them some breathing room. That accompanied with the programs, and the programs are gonna continue regardless, you know, so we're gonna, you know, Heam and her staff, they're gonna continue to try to promote some of the programs and try to find, you know, kids' interests and help them move on and go to the Berry Center and so on, you know, as much as possible, if that's what their career, their career path and that's where their interests lie. So, we, when we look at 5B, the numbers, again, are a lot more favorable at Dearborn High as well and Etzel Ford number goes up, but again, that's one of the things, if you remember, when we first started this, we wanted to increase the population at Etzel Ford, so we were deliberate about increasing that population.
And the numbers for like DCMST and Berry, I've been doing staffing, I've been doing projections and staffing with the high schools, it's been very consistent for the past three years. Very little fluctuation in how many kids go to DCMST from each high school and Berry.
And it's pretty competitive, very competitive, so we know it's optional.
Yeah, the numbers really, like, it doesn't change much, less than twenty students in dual enrollment, which is a large number, so that's a drop. And DCMST and Berry are very consistent.
So, even though those programs are optional, it's very competitive and students are, they really want to get in.
But DCMST was capped, wasn't it? I mean, it's theoretically not unlimited program. The number of students from each high school that end up going there, there's been very little change in those numbers since I've been doing staffing for the high schools.
But the Berry Center, yeah?
Yes, I mean, we've done some things over the last couple of years and our enrollment is ticking up. One is adding tenth graders and Fortson, I think, was the first one to really propose this. As we got some relief with the Michigan Merrick curriculum, we were able to do that. So, we've been adding cohorts of tenth graders from the other two buildings as well. So, you know, those numbers have changed, plus moving that Dearborn Business Academy over to Michael Berry and we're expecting that to continue to grow. We've looked at some more AP opportunities and including some AP programming from DCMST that would include the Michael Berry students as well as even a handful of magna students to have some opportunity to take advantage of those courses as well.
And most of these are still half-day programs, correct?
Absolutely, except for magna.
And then the Collegiate Academy had the largest number, the largest cohort this last year of a hundred and thirty-seven, I think. And so, when you think about that senior year, those students only attend one class in their high school, they're at the college for the rest of the day. So, and that, that has grown every year and we're gonna push to grow it further because it's just such a great opportunity for our students.
Trustee Lane.
Well, I was just going to ask whether we'd given any, I asked Dr. Jensen and then Mr. Sidkowski now whether we could encourage more students to come out of any, any of the three high schools by bringing college teachers or training some of our DFT teachers and putting them at either Berry Center or at Etzel and run a shuttle between any of those places just to pull students out of either Dearborn or Fortson.
And we.
And I don't know whether we're considering that. I mean, we could do that with humanities, with international baccalaureate, college programs or a program maybe that Ford or other careers that are up and coming and, and thank you for all of your creative thinking. I think it's been very.
We also have a group of students that are spending the majority of their day at Michael Berry and we intend to see that grow as well. You know, some of them getting co-op, taking the Business Academy, they're spending the majority, mainly seniors, but, you know, we expect that that will grow as well.
So, I, and we spoke about that. So, I actually had a meeting with Mr. Sidkowski and Dr. Nealan on Monday with Ms. Peterson and Mr. Fidola, so we started that conversation with them. There's some advantages and disadvantages, they explained with some of the, having them at our building may have some disadvantages as far as transferability of the credits.
Right, if a college professor teaches a college class at a high school, most universities will not accept a credit. So, that, that is not an option.
But we, you know, it's still options we wanted to look at, but that's what they were telling us, Dr. Nealan, so.
So, if we have the same class and we drive them someplace else, it is a credit.
Do they take it out of college class?
So, but we can still explore.
Because college students, like, that's, that's the.
Now, you do have other options, like with early colleges, which we want to expand. So, you could potentially have, like the Collegiate Academy, you know, we have the two early colleges that we want to expand and we need space. That's part of the conversation that, which I want to keep that on the forefront too because that will be part of the solution as well. We've talked about that. It might not be the main solution, but it's good for kids. The programs are good for kids. They're getting paid, they're going into career technical areas, both in the medical. In fact, we were just at, I really am appreciative of the college and Mr. Sidkowski and Mr. Fidola and Dr. Nealan because they hosted, all of our administrators were there today. We actually had training sessions with the college, it was very positive. We went, we were looking at data of how well our students are doing in the college and other things, but that's to, we want to expand that. And so, you could look at options potentially where you have the high school level classes for the early colleges on our site and then the students are just going over to the college to take the college-level credits, which are usually the year five. So, that, you know, you'd have to work through logistics, but that was something, we just had an initial brainstorm. For example, Etzel with space, if you did build, could you house more there? And the reason it came up is because they have space issues as well at the college and they, that's why we can't expand the early college.
They are centrally located, so.
So, yeah.
And I didn't know that, Shannon, in terms of having, that you can't accept college credits, because what a great opportunity this would have been, because especially for Etzel, you see more students going to college, for example, taking those college classes at Dearborn High.
If it was there, yeah.
And Fortson, and sometimes maybe it's because of transportation, maybe they, and they can't leave campus. So, how nice would it be to bring those opportunities to them if we are able to do something like this? So, I guess this is not where the, where the conversation ends. This is where the conversation begins and continues, actually, because we have been thinking about this and more educational opportunities for our students.
Can Mr. Andrews handle it, I guess that's another question.
Mr. Andrews can handle anything.
Awesome.
Just tell him what you want and he'll figure it out.
That is on our record, Mr. Mishur, right?
Yeah, that's no problem.
Now, back to Shannon, did you say none of the colleges, or most of the colleges won't accept?
Dr. Nealan spoke to us about the possibility of having, well, we mentioned having a college professor teaching it, they call it concurrent class.
Sure.
Colleges, if it's taught on the high school campus, typically do not accept that credit because it's with all high school students and part of the benefit of dual enrollment classes, you're taking it as college kids.
Experience, yeah. Okay, that's a discussion.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
How about AP classes? I mean, when you take AP classes, those are in high school.
You have to test.
Pass the test and get a certain score and, you know.
So, why can't?
Yeah, they take the AP test and then depending, some schools will take, give you credit if you get a three on it, some a four and some a five, but they, in a dual enrollment class, if you pass the class, it's taken at Henry Ford, then typically, depending on what the class is, it would, it transfers even when you move to university. But AP, it depends on, the university decides what score, like you have them in number of, they'll give a five. You have them at Dearborn, they'll take a three, so it just, but you have to pass that test and some students are, you know.
Yeah, but that still doesn't make that much sense to me. That first, you know, they want to say it's interaction and being on campus and now the conversation changes to, well, they gotta take a test.
Well, APs are taken in the high school though, so.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, but the point, point is, is there a way that we could fit something to, I don't know, I mean.
I wonder if you designate a wing or, or a wing in a school to call it part of Henry Ford. I've heard of that.
Academy at Etzel Ford, right.
But if they find out it's only high school students, then, then that negates the purpose, you would have to be allowing in adults into the, have the course open to the community. I think we're getting kind of off track right now from what we should be talking about.
That's okay.
But Proposal 5 does need an expansion at the Michael Berry, is that correct? Did I understand that correctly?
Yes, yes.
Five A, 5B or both A and B?
Both.
Both, because of Fortson.
But is it just five or in general, we've been talking about an expansion anyways?
Yeah, five, four, anything.
So, it's not necessarily five?
Correct.
Okay.
Could we have a distinction between 5A and 5B in terms of how many classrooms are being built where and, and the busing? Just a summary.
Okay, so, again, the busing for 5B, we would be adding ten buses to Etzel Ford. We'd be reducing one at Dearborn High. For 5A, the busing, we're adding two total buses, if I remember right?
Let's see, it says net plus three.
Oh, so three total buses. You'd be adding, we'd be adding three buses to Etzel Ford, Dearborn High would be the same in 5A.
What do you mean it'd be the same? Three?
No, fourteen.
Fifteen.
Fourteen is what we currently have, it'll continue to be fourteen.
Well, you have fifteen here, but, yeah.
Okay, what about classrooms? Between 5A and 5B?
Classes, I don't.
All right, so for Dearborn, four classroom addition. At Etzel Ford, eight classroom addition. And Tim, is it six at Michael Berry?
It's four or six depending on.
Four or six, but it's a two-story, so it's a little more expensive at Michael Berry.
But again.
So, either for A or B, they're gonna be the same.
Correct.
The same increase in classrooms.
Though Dearborn High, four classrooms, it's gonna be no matter what proposal.
No matter what, exactly.
It has nothing to do with five.
And the same for Berry, right? Or is it only?
No, no, Berry would.
Only for five?
Right, it was just the Dearborn High as it stands right now.
Right, okay. Okay, now, you know, one of the comments made at one of the community forums was, well, if you increase busing at the school, you're gonna have less participation in activities and sports and so on. And although there is some truth to that, it's not to that level. And again, if you look at, you know, you can look at statistics outside our district and so on, but to me, I want to look at our district. So, you look at Stout, which is primarily a busing school, and their participation in sports and activities is very, very good. It's actually either first or second in almost every single sport as far as number of students participating in almost every, every activity. And a lot of those students are bussed home because we provide activity busing. Currently, we provide activity busing at Dearborn High and we provide at Etzel Ford. So, would we have to increase activity busing at Etzel Ford in either Proposal 5A or 5B? Yes, we would. And that's something that we're willing to do, again, because it's best for students and if that's what's gonna help them participate in sports, then we'll, we'll provide the activity busing, which is, you know, an hour or a couple hours, sorry, after the school day ends and so on and kids will, will still, if they participate, if they want to swim, they'll continue to swim, just like, again, just like some of our Stout students. You know, our, our city champion Stout girls from last year in track, our city champion Stout girls, we had, you know, a bus full of those girls that were being transported back to the Maples area after school. So, to me, it's, if the interest is there and obviously you provide the transportation, then they'll, they'll stay and participate in the sports. So, that's, I guess, the counterargument to that one.
Real quick, Abe.
Yes.
Parent participation, when you start busing the kids?
Yes.
Okay, you're talking about Stout, we're concentrating on high schools right now.
Right.
When it comes to Etzel Ford, you, you feel like that the student participation and parent participation is at par with the other two high schools overall?
You're talking right now as far as Etzel Ford or?
Just in general, at high school, you know, when you start busing kids from one side of town.
High school, parent participation.
Let's talk about the Salina kids.
Correct.
Are they getting the same opportunities as the kids that, like, live close to Fortson or live close to Dearborn High?
The Salina students at Etzel Ford get activity busing at the end of the school day. Again, because of, you know, I don't want to speculate as to why some of those students are not participating as much, but if you look at, for example, our Salina football team, it's not like we have fifty students playing football at Salina. The numbers are small already. So, the Salina basketball team, you know, a lot of kids, you know, will try out for basketball. We might have fifty eighth graders trying out for the eighth grade basketball team. So, we'll have quite a significant number of those students trying out at Etzel Ford because the passion and love for the game of basketball exists in that population. Some of the, the female students, you know, we had many very, very good and city champion volleyball teams at Salina, but sometimes those girls, when they get to the high school level, they don't want to participate in sports as much. Now, is it because of the, you know, proximity to the school, is it because of the age, is it because of family beliefs? Again, I don't want to speculate on that.
Okay, maybe I gave you that example. How about the Maple School students at Dearborn High?
Yeah.
When you don't have the parent participation, parent support, that kind of discourages the students. I know most, you know, students that go out for, let's say, golf or basketball or what have you, football's a little different thing, but most sports, if the parents aren't there to support their kids, the kids get discouraged and probably by ninth, tenth grade start dropping off.
Yeah.
And I don't want to dodge the point about parent participation.
No, that's fine. The parent participation, I guess I'll, I'll ask the principals, you know, how, how involved are the parents that are coming to, you know, to Dearborn High from the Stout area? How involved are the parents from Salina at, at Etzel Ford, open house, parent conferences, those types of things, and obviously sporting events?
I mean, let me just say something before they answer. The fact of the matter is, and I've been at every level, you have a lot of parent participation in elementary, it slides a little in middle school and it slides a lot. From all the years that I've been doing this, it slides a lot in high school. And I'm at a school where parents can, you know, walk in. It's, it's not, you know, they just count on these adult-like students to take care of themselves in a lot of cases.
What about like PTA organizations and, you know, what is it, what am I thinking here? What's the group at Dearborn High?
PFSA.
Yeah.
So, so for Etzel Ford, I can say that, you know, we've purposely planned for transportation buses from our Title I budget and we've communicated with the district as well when the needs rises for athletics or after-school programs. So, the numbers have been up amongst the students participating in those programs over the years. I know we, the AAYSP did a study, I believe it was a couple of years ago, and we actually learned a lot from that, the data from that, that in looking into that, the numbers continue to rise, you know, participation and band and things like that, specifically from the Salina community. That's one of the points I addressed in looking at the different proposals, you know, and the Woodworth piece of that. It's very important that we have that in place because we would want to welcome the kids into the school and make sure that we grow from that. It's, it's an exciting opportunity for Etzel Ford as the way we, we look at it, that injection. We always want to try to improve parent involvement. It's not where I want it to be, I will say that. I don't know that I would ever be happy until we get every parent there, but we know that's not possible, but we're always looking to, to grow that. And we do, again, for open house or parent-teacher conferences and different events at the school, again, the district has supported us. No one has been left behind. Sometimes it's a matter of maybe not taking advantage of the opportunity and we're looking, always looking for input and ways to solve that as well.
Thank you. What I'm, what I'm hearing you say is it's, it's on the rise, but it's not at par with the Snow students, you know, the parents of the Snow students.
Honestly, I can't answer that because I don't know how to measure that.
Okay, the other, the other question's probably for, for Principal Martin.
Yeah, I don't.
The Maple School students coming over, how involved are those parents with the Booster Club or the parent organization?
So, I would say they're not super involved, but I would go back to what Ms. Alcandre said at the high school, there is a drop-off between parent involvement versus what you would see at the elementary school. I would say we have built into our title budget, like Scott, activity buses to ensure that students are provided those opportunities after school for different activities, after school tutoring, different things like that. The one piece that I would say is we try to be pretty reflective and attentive to what we're hearing from our parents and what we're seeing in surveys. That complaint, the transportation complaint, isn't one that we see. So, I don't know that it's a transportation or a distance piece. I think there's some other components to it. I agree with Scott. I'm not happy that it's that way. I don't necessarily know that there's one piece, I call it location, that is the cure-all for that.
I just want to comment on the parent involvement topic. Is that, I'm sorry, I'm gonna stand. Is that, we are really lucky, I absolutely have to say that parent involvement will never be something that we don't continue to want to increase. I can say, I've been in K-12 buildings, there, there was buildings I arrived at and I was told as an administrator that you will never get parents in this building. And I'm really happy to say that that changed over the years because there was a conscience, conscious effort to make that happen. It's never something that we have, can, can back off on, we have to continue working towards getting our parents there. We are so blessed in this district because we have title funding and a certain percentage of the title funding is required to be spent on parent involvement and parent participation. And so, uh, Scott referenced that with the busing at Edsel. And really, Edsel is the only place that I can think of where that has been a topic that's come up. Like, we need to provide transportation for our parents for understandable, obvious reasons because of the location and, and the distance. Um, but it is an area that we have funding that is tied to. I mean, the title funding is tied to our parent involvement. And I'm sitting here thinking, how could we measure this while I'm listening? And I mean, something that I would use as a feedback or as part of, um, like, the, the state reports that we're required to submit. So I would look at, like, the number of, um, parents that attended different meetings through the year because they sign in when they come in. Um, the number of parents that attended parent education, uh, because we're really rich in parent education classes. But again, which somebody referenced, is that in some points, it is a matter of interest. The parent's interest, the parent's availability to be able to do so. And so I was in mostly neighborhood schools, so transportation usually wasn't the issue. But still, the interest was, and then you play around with the time and you get the feedback and you say, well, we're gonna offer it in the evening and we're gonna offer it at nine in the morning. And we're gonna see how much we, you know, what kind of involvement we can get. So, um, I think it's important that, of course, it's something we're gonna always work to improve. But where transportation wasn't issued, there was a solution. And, and there, I'm confident there would be with the title dollars for that, that piece.
That is, I agree with Trustee Berry's point.
And the, the unspoken thing that he's not saying is there's money now.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
And what he's saying is that with certain of these plans, we have to commit to future commitment to make sure there's equity across the district.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Because reality is that the kids that are coming big distances, then they, without the busing, they don't have the opportunities.
You have to reach out. It's like getting them to go, getting parents to go vote.
And I know for a fact that the South End has, for many years, had an issue. Uh, probably most people who've been here long enough have heard it. Um, so, uh, they've often felt that there, there wasn't enough outreach and there wasn't enough participation. Yeah, so it's definitely been an issue throughout the years.
I was gonna, I was waiting for Mason to finish, but she made the comment I was gonna make. No, I'm sorry, no, thank you, thank you.
I was trying to think of the measurement.
You were very successful, obviously, at Woodworth and Fortson.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Okay. But those are neighborhood schools. All I'm doing right now is planting the seeds for the bigger talk and we start talking long-term solutions. We need to keep all this on the table.
Oh, absolutely, something. We never.
We're not gonna solve everything tonight. We're not gonna solve everything at the next meeting. But if we're gonna commit to a long-term solution.
These are things to consider.
These are gonna, the, the twenty students over there by the tennis courts at Fortson need to be part of the big discussion.
Yeah.
Uh, parent involvement has to be on the table as part of the bigger discussion. Let's be very realistic. On a night like this, if, if, if my child's school, I don't care if it's elementary, middle, or Fortson, if you gave me a reason to come into that building, I'm more likely to walk over there. If I gotta get in my car and drive twenty-two minutes over the, over Millard Bridge and what have you, I'm probably not gonna leave my house. That's, that's, that's real. We have to keep that on the table. Thank you.
Trustee Petlicoff.
I, I just wanna disagree a little bit here because I know of many, many school districts in this state and probably nationwide that are huge, that bus every student, that for twenty miles. That, I mean, we're talking from one end of the city to the other, eight miles maybe max. And most of us, that is, that is not, uh, there's a lot of joggers and bikers who can get from one side of the city to the other if, if they are interested in doing that. So this, this concern that, you know, five miles versus three miles is going to impact a student and their parents' ability to participate at a building seems to me a little bit, um, disingenuous with, with the effort that should be put forth by the, um, parent and the school and the school community to engage. And, you know, I, I, um, had my kids schooled of choice. I drove every day from the far east end of Dearborn to the far, I guess, southwest end of Dearborn for years. And I didn't bat an eye. I was on the PTA. I was involved in everything, every sporting event. I was the only one who went to every single one of my kids', um, sporting events. We got an award for it. For four years, we attended everything. It didn't matter because it was important to us. And quite frankly, to say that if I can't walk two blocks, and, and I will tell you, in my neighborhood, they'll drive their car the two blocks. They're not even gonna walk the two blocks. And, and that if they can't have that access, that it's, we're a failure in providing for them. Somehow I feel that we're, we're not, um, holding people responsible and accountable for participating. I mean, it is, it, it is a requirement of being a parent. It is that, um, to engage with your buildings. And we're not talking about a fifty-mile ride here. We're talking about a few miles at most. And so I'm not going to use a couple miles as a gauge to decide how boundaries should be, um, decided if it comes to the fact that we can provide an equitable, um, educational experience for everyone.
Can I just mention something? Thank you, along those lines, and Mr. Casebolt's here. So the work that we've done, and I can speak to Salina because, um, I know the board's where I spent twelve years there. So I'm well aware of, you know, what has gone on, well aware of some of those arguments. And I was here as a superintendent working with Mr. Casebolt. We did an intensive, um, study with data with A A Y S P about participation and looking why and why not. We actually did fix the issue of the bus. Now, is it because it's longer? Will someone have a motive? Possibly. But we added an extra utility, uh, activity bus, a second one. So what happened, though, is Mr. Casebolt started doing other things to encourage participation. It wasn't the busing that we were finding that was the big issue. It was things like he was doing of encouraging involvement. In fact, he had some of his athletes in that go over to Salina and try to get them into, you know, you're a Thunderbird. So there was other things that his staff did. Mr. Khalid Abdallah, actually, who's from the Salina community, actually spoke at some of the meetings and said, no, that's not the, some of this issue is just some of the kids for other reasons, their own intrinsic motivation for different sports. The other thing about the Salina examples, remember, there are not as many students. So when you compare them to Smith, you really gotta look at percentages. You can't look at the overall number because Smith has doubled the students approximately. Salina only has three hundred kids in sixth or eighth grade. So you gotta do percentages. So, you know, when you look at that, look at percentages. Now, is there still areas to improve? Yes. And we came to that conclusion. Uh, Mr. Casebolt, I don't know if you wanna mention, but this is a perfect example because this is a topic that we were tackling for two years. And, and I know he's done a lot of work with his team over there to get more encouragement. But we also found the solution, uh, to the busing is just an extra activity bus seemed to solve that transportation issue. Having not just one, but the second one. And I can't remember the time, but one's at four and a.
This is the third year for that extra.
So we just added that and it's, that has helped.
We had, that, that's an extra one. We had one before, longer than three years, but we added an extra one even.
Correct, a second route.
But speaking of numbers, Dr. Malak, okay, so you take Fortson, no busing at all at Fortson, and has twenty-six hundred-plus students, always the highest enrollment. Dearborn High, two thousand, twenty-one hundred students. Over half of the school is bussed to Dearborn High. Yet the parent involvement at Dearborn High and the Booster Club at Dearborn High tops Fortson and Edsel Ford combined as far as, you know, uh, numbers go and busing and not busing and so on. So, you know, again, what Trustee Petlicoff said, as far as values and so on and how involved the parents wanna be, the opportunity's there. It's unfortunate. It's not where we want it to be, as everybody, I think, would agree with that, but it's the reality. The reality is that the, the Dearborn High Booster Club will generate over twenty thousand dollars a year. And, and, you know, the Edsel Ford population is smaller and yet they'll generate almost as much money as the Fortson Booster Club will. And it's, you know, and I'm, just don't wanna talk about money. Obviously, the parent involvement and the, the number of people on the Booster Clubs, you know, again, Dearborn High's over half bussed and over fifty percent of it is bussed and, uh, Fortson has, has no busing. So it just, you know, depends on a lot of other things.
Trustee Berry, before you, uh, talk, can I just ask, what's the relevancy of this discussion to overcrowding?
I think, no, I, well, I think the relevancy came into play when, when, uh, when the, you know, we talked about how many students were gonna be bussed to Edsel Ford. So increasing the busing, would it consequently decrease the poss, the, the participation and parent involvement? So that's, that's how, it's, it's a very relevant discussion. And I agree with Trustee Berry that we have to look at, when we look at the big picture, that's another factor to consider without question. But I think it's, there's so much more involved than just busing. It's kinda like saying, we reduce suspensions because, or we reduce, uh, uh, you know, behavior, you know, misbehavior in schools because we ticket students. No, there's a lot of variables. There's restorative practices. There's the conversation, social work, et cetera, et cetera.
I think, Trustee Berry, you want us to keep it on the table and keep it as a consideration.
No, I gotta, I gotta comment.
Yes, go right ahead.
Principal Martin.
Yes, sir.
I would imagine the Maple School students is about thirty-five percent of your population?
Hmm, less, yeah.
Are they twenty-five percent of your Booster Club members?
Um, I would say no.
Thank you. This is a very relevant part of the bigger discussion, very, very part. Uh, Trustee Petlicoff, your daughters, if I remember, they were close in age. They were very, very lucky to have you in their life. Uh, but most of our families on their side of town, they have children at the elementary level, middle school level, high school level. So ten, fifteen minutes does make a huge difference when they're gonna make that decision if they're gonna go to their PTA meeting and go watch their daughter swim or play basketball, what have you. The, these are real.
Trustee Thorpe.
I think what you would also see is, as a parent, if everything is going well, you're not necessarily going over to the school too much. It's when it's in trouble, and Mr. Casebolt, you could probably attest to this, when you were on the priority list, I'm assuming participation from parents soared.
Lots of interest.
But at the same point, uh, or, well, beginning of February, I think it was, I went to the, uh, chatting with the superintendent over at Dearborn High. And there was four parents there. And I think three of them were on the PTA, uh, members of the PTA that was having a meeting right afterwards. And we were talking about this stuff. So I think when there's trouble, you'll always get more. I'm not just saying anything against the other points, but people are pretty happy. Look at the community forums. You saw higher participation from Edsel, Smith, Woodworth. The schools are gonna be impacted a lot more than you did at Bryant, Saylori, things like that.
The other thing with the proposal five is that it's not shifting any of the current students that currently go to Edsel. So you really are not gonna reduce, if you're worried about reducing Edsel, well, you've got the status quo plus you're adding students. Um, now, if you're worried about impacts of those students that are coming from those locations, that would be more of the concern. What we heard at the Edsel forum is they're worried if you shift different populations that they won't. Well, that wouldn't be the case. If, if anything, you'd have additional increase because you're increasing the population. And I thought, if Mr. Casebolt could comment on.
That's exactly right. And, and that was my point. I agree with Trustee Berry as well. When I saw the Woodworth number, I thought immediately of Salina and I thought, I'm not going to start at ground zero. Now is the time to have that conversation, to make sure we have that transportation absolutely. Two, make sure we maximize opportunities for, for kids coming over. We wanna welcome to the building. We want them to have a great academic during the day experience. And we want them involved in plays, sports and clubs and, and the whole high school experience. And there was an awareness of that as well, so.
You taking the lead on that is music to my ears. Thank you.
It's never, parent involvement is never off the table. It's always in the forefront of everything we do. It really has to be. So I, I do hear what you're saying and I agree, it has to stay on the table. But trust us when we say it really is. It really is. We're nothing without our parents.
I'm saying it's not. I'm not saying it's not. I'm saying we have to take this into consideration. Is it the, is it in best interest of students to bus kids? No. Nobody's gonna say, let's just, just do it for no reason. So let's just keep that discussion going. It is, if we're gonna have real long-term goals, no, busing is not in the best interest of students.
Trustee Hamud.
I think that this conversation is a very important conversation. However, from what I've learned from everybody who just, who just spoke in terms of the comments, whether it's Booster Club and parent involvement and so on, it's my understanding that many students at, from Dearborn High are bussed, you still have high parent involvement. How about Fortson? You, you have parents that maybe are right across the street and your Booster Club is, has low numbers. Is that correct?
I, I, I don't measure parent involvement by Booster Club, but I do have a lot of parents come to my, come to my meetings. Um, I do a lot to promote parent participation in my, uh, PTAs at night. I have one during the day. Plus, we have other educational classes for them. You're welcome to come see. We get a lot of parents because we do a lot to promote it.
And that's exactly the point, is that we don't measure by Booster Clubs. Or how, twenty-five percent of parents, are they from this certain area? We shouldn't be measuring by Booster Clubs. In fact, this conversation should be, if, if we really want to invest in increasing parent involvement, we have to make it equitable for these parents. We have to make it to, especially in our community here. This go, this is an issue that goes far beyond boundary lines and capacity issues. This is honestly a conversation that hopefully we can all sit around the table and tackle at some point. But this goes back to equity and, uh, you have an immigrant population, a refugee population who, believe me, want to be involved and, uh, probably hurts them that they're not involved. But what are the resources that we are offering? This goes beyond busing. The conversation doesn't start or doesn't end at busing. But what are those Title IX funds? And those Title IX funds, and I'm glad that you mentioned that, Mason, these, these are for, I think that when people make, when, when people think of these funds, they think of parents like the ones that we have right in this community. Because these are the parents that need it. So this conversation about whether a parent is going to be involved, is it gonna be solved whether somebody is bussed from one area to another? This is a much bigger conversation. This is providing our parents with the resources to be involved in their children's lives. Whether it's with language, whether it's with, uh, arming them with opportunities like, let's teach them how to access a computer, especially when they're coming from overseas. These are the conversations that I would like to see. It's a much bigger conversation. It's a conversation that needs to be had, so. And it goes beyond this. It's not gonna be solved with a bus or a couple of miles.
Just for the record, my comments and question about the Booster Club was follow-up to Mr. Mishur's report about the Booster Club and how involved they are and how much money they raise. That was, that was why I made that comment and that's why I questioned, Dr., Mr. Martin. Thank you.
Can we move on to proposal six, please?
You got it, boss. Okay, so proposal six. Proposal six, uh, would have, uh, Woodworth, uh, half of Woodworth again, uh, Woodworth would be split, uh, would be going to Dearborn High. That number would put Dearborn High right around two thousand and, uh, right at two thousand, sorry. And so your change here, here, here you're gonna have significant changes because, uh, the Smith students, uh, the portion of River Oaks that goes, uh, goes to Smith would not be at Dearborn High. They would all be at Edsel Ford. And the Stout students would all go to Fortson. Again, this is a cleaner split, those of you that, you know, like cleaner splits, I guess, if you will, and more feeder-track oriented. Um, Smith would, Edsel Ford would have Salina, Smith and half of Stout. And Lori would have, uh, I'm sorry, Fortson would have Lori, half of Woodworth, Eunice and half of Stout. So now the Stout students, the twenty students who, uh, generally go to Stout, uh, or go from Stout to Fortson, rather, they would be accompanied by, uh, pretty much, uh, half of their classmates, half of the population. Again, the numbers here, Dearborn High's still a little bit on the high side, but it's two thousand is, uh, better than where we are today. Edsel Ford goes up to just under nineteen hundred. Fortson would still be high, close to twenty-seven hundred.
Aren't you saying that we wanted Edsel Ford to get larger?
We do. And it would. It would get larger, but not significantly.
Okay. All right, you can show the map.
Yep, there's your map. And, uh, busing would, you know, be a net increase of two buses to Edsel Ford. Uh, Dearborn High would be, I'm sorry, um, one, one to, no, no, two to Edsel Ford, two to Edsel Ford because we're currently at fourteen and ten. So, uh, two increased buses to Edsel Ford. Um, you know, construction stays the same as it has throughout the, you know, the different proposals. And when we get to seven and eight, seventh is the ninth grade.
We're gonna take a little break.
You got, there's nothing much, but, because seventh is the ninth grade academy and eighth is the new high school.
Okay.
Perfect time to take your break and then you can get back to your architect and construction.
All right. Ten minutes? Fifteen? Fifteen minutes.
Seven oh five. Seven oh five.
Seven oh five.